Make a motion, we adjourn.
You're looking at the chairman.
Chris Lee brings that issue of the warrants.
Oh, yeah.
Is there anything else to do about that?
Not a hell of a lot. First thing is they're stored up. So if you do anything, it's causing harm in the way. They got plans to take them down. Just can't. Just too expensive.
It's a pretty big liability. We can actually just spend a little bit tonight. Yeah, it's a lot of time to spend even though they're destroyed.
We got a better one in a week or so. I'm going up to look at the new waterfall again.
Really? Where?
South. You go to South, South of Mount Vernon and turn left up against the hills. Some people are donating a bunch of property in the really cool waterfall.
Okay, it's, um, and I hope you're right there. It's six o'clock, so I'm going to call the city council study session to order. Please stand with me to say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to do a quick roll call. From Lawton.
Here.
Councilman Cox.
Here.
Councilman Anderson.
Here.
Councilman Burns.
Present.
Councilwoman Hestie, with it. Councilman Labaka.
Here.
Everybody in attendance. All right. So, thank you, everybody, for being here tonight. And special thanks to our guest. And so to get this going, I think Charlie, I'm just going to turn this over to you and we'll discuss HR.
Yeah. Council, we've got a full packet of information for you tonight. If you have an anxious look, we'll get into some of it as we go. The question before you is really, should the city create its first full-time human resources position? And in doing that, we're essentially included in the next budget amendment. But before we get into answer, the, we tried to answer a lot of questions that came up in the prior discussion in the agenda materials before we dive into all of that. We have invited Kathy White, the HR manager with SCADU to join us to talk a little bit about what an HR manager does in a public organization. And just to kind of give you the framework for that. So we've got our PowerPoint and certainly ask Kathy questions, then we'll dive into policy discussion and more to do. Go ahead.
Okay. I didn't know I'd be starting it off.
Yeah, we're not going to start it off.
Well, thank you for having me. Just first, a little bit about me and my qualifications. And first of all, I think I should start with why I'm here. I'm here for interagency cooperation and just assistance only. This is often something that we do is help other local agencies. I often do that as part of my HR role. I'm not personally invested in this, in this decision, and I don't plan to apply for the position if you do choose to hire for it. So it's, I'm just here to help. So hopefully I can provide some information for you, and that's the only reason why I'm here. So also, I want to make it clear that I'm not representing the PUD in any official capacity. So. My experience and qualifications, I've been doing HR for about 28 years now. And I have experience in local county government, federal contracts, private, and now in the PUD. And I've been in my position for almost 10 years. So I think I can provide some unique perspective on how having an effective HR can help an organization. So that's what I'm going to briefly talk about. I don't have a lot of prepared remarks, but I'm certainly open to questions if anybody has any. So. And the next slide would be great. So just, I wanted to talk about a few recent employer challenges. So from my perspective, there are a few notable areas that I feel have been a particular challenge in the past few years, in particular for a public employer. So in 2018, there was a new paid sick leave law that got implemented. Then in 2019, there was a new paid family and medical leave, PFML, was implemented. Then in 2022, a long-term care tax and insurance law was implemented, although it was postponed, it wasn't eliminated. In Washington State, one thing that's fairly common is that laws are implemented without rulemaking being done. It makes it a real challenge for HR people. The impact to operations policies and also collective bargaining agreements can be really huge. Laws, especially leave laws in areas that affect working conditions, could be a real minefield to navigate. And that's just based on my experience. So and then in 2020, we all know that COVID-19 required all of us to really quickly adapt. It affected staffing and risk and remote work and liability and extended accommodation issues and many more. So we're still dealing with the after effects of that. So and then we're dealing with staffing challenges due to market changes. So that's just a few. There are constant challenges, and I think the last few years in particular have been a real challenge for people in HR. So I thought that was just important to talk about. And then I'm just going to talk about some HR areas of expertise that can really benefit an organization. And again, this is just from my perspective and my experience. So recruiting and retention initiatives, recruiting, interviewing, hiring, onboarding, training new employees. It's costly and it's time consuming. Job analysis. Good HR people can determine whether restructuring or retooling jobs is beneficial to operations and also work in cooperation with departments and also work in cooperation with unions to get it done effectively and cooperatively and collaboratively. Succession planning, the Silver tsunami, I'm sure you've all heard about that. That's going to be very impactful to a lot of local organizations. I'm not sure how impactful to yours. I don't know what your demographics are. But especially over the next 10 to 20 years, that's something that we're all going to be struggling with. Compensation systems and market research. Are we attracting and keeping quality people? That's always a challenge because, again, it's costly and it's time consuming to hire new people. Evaluation systems. Are evaluation systems fair? Do they develop people's talents? Do they identify what is lacking and where improvement is necessary? Supervisor development and coaching. Do our supervisors know how to bring out the best in people and to also not create liability for an organization? That's really, really important, and often they don't. Employee training and development initiatives. Can we help people grow? Are we doing that effectively? Are we utilizing the money that we have for training in the best possible way? Employee and labor relations. A good HR person can represent the organization and make sure that management rights are protected, but also ensure the organization is following the collective bargaining agreement, which is second only to employment law, really. It's an ironclad agreement. They can build good communication with unions, so trust is developed. We may not be on the same page. I know that from firsthand experience. But if you can be counted on to have integrity, that really goes a long way to building trust because distrust is really hard to build back. People have long memories. For those of you who have experienced that, it's really hard to build that back if it's lost. So. The next slide would be great. Benefit program evaluation and improvement. Are we providing the best bang for the buck for our benefit dollars? That's always something that I look at. Leave administration. Are we ensuring that employees have what they need and that their rights are protected? But also, at the same time, making sure that we are creating risk issue. Employee leave is like a complex puzzle, especially in Washington State. There are a lot of things to consider. Performance management and performance improvement plans. Are we creating or providing a way for employees to improve fairly but holding them accountable? Strategic planning, looking into the future with regard to staff and best practices. Internal audits, again, managing risk. Internal investigations. When are they necessary? Should we outsource those or handle in-house? This can make the difference between a good outcome or a lawsuit or a tort claim. Proper control of employee information. Not everything is public record, and so we need to make sure that we are maintaining the integrity of that information. And then HR just can provide a buffer between management and employees, and it shields people as needed. HR has information that supervisors don't necessarily need, so they can't be accused of making decisions based on protected class, for example. A good HR person can protect both the employer and the employee. So that's one of the most important things that I always keep in mind. So in just a couple of closing thoughts, just like finances, the money partner and IT is the technical partner. In an organization, HR is basically the people partner, is how I always look at it. And more important than ever, it is more important than ever that people are treated with kindness, compassion, and dignity and respect in the workplace. And so HR can advocate for healthy business operations, but also focusing on a people-centered culture. HR looks out for the organization and also manages employee, employment risk, which can be huge. And HR used to be kind of the personnel office. And when I started in HR, that's basically what it was. But now in the area era that we're in, with the laws that we have in place and the prevalence of legal actions against employers, it's important that someone looks out for those business practices. So without the business or organization, the jobs wouldn't exist, but without the people in those positions and jobs, the organization wouldn't exist. So basically, what HR does is helps with that balance in a nutshell. So. I probably talked really fast. I have a tendency to do that. I do that in my meetings as well. So I guess just, if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I know I would feel it really quickly. I just wanted to kind of provide an overview of how I view it. But if anyone has questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
I'm not sure about the rest of the council. I have a pretty familiar understanding with HR. HR is some of the business I've worked with, so. Helpful information, but I believe that is pretty standard within HR position. I thought that the position was voted on a little bit ago. And I thought that we have an HR department already, which is Charlie, Nikki, and Janine, in a way. And so that's what I'm kind of confused on, like, the HR. Are we pursuing that even though it was voted on, or are we?
Our understanding is that we basically had a budget amendment for 2024. We included an HR manager in that budget amendment. We heard comments from council, and there was a motion from council to remove the HR manager position from that budget amendment. The money still went, but it's not allocated to that position. So the idea and my request from council was to set that conversation aside for a follow-up conversation, and that's what we're doing tonight. And the goal is to have that within a couple of months, and we're trying to get that target.
Yeah, I wasn't here for that vote. I would have voted not to do the HR position myself, just because I see that we do have some people that can facilitate that for the type of staff that we have. And there's needs and budget concerns already, but I wasn't here for that one. But I was under the impression that once something's voted on, that the people in the majority party can bring that back up. But that seems like we're bringing it back up for discussion. Is this educational about HR? Are we looking to re-vote on what was already?
This is a follow-up to council's motion to set this aside and have a follow-up discussion.
Oh, so they just voted just a table. That's exactly what they did. They just set that aside and said, we wouldn't like to have a, for your conversation about that at a different time.
I reviewed or went through the session even though I wasn't here. It just seemed like it was voted.
Yeah, in fact, the way that it was set up, actually, it was Councilman Lloyd who asked if it could come back at some time, especially when, he asked when the next budget amendment was going to be happening. And I think Kelly shared that it may be in May, as soon as May. And so it was Councilman Lloyd who asked if we could have that discussion again at that time. So I think what we really hope to do here is provide you with a lot of information so that you can make best decision possible for both the citizens of Sisouli, but also the city itself, for the employees and for the staff.
I have some questions for you, Kathy, if I could, tee off with you. So how many, just because we're trying to get a familiarity with with different budgets and revenues and all this other stuff. So how many people do you have in your HR department at PUD?
I have, well, we have two. But our current HR is a payroll and HR coordinator, and so she basically knows half time for finance and half time for HR.
Sure, we have something similar to that. And so it's you and then the payroll HR person. And if you wouldn't mind, what is, compared to us, what is the PUD's annual revenue?
I'm not sure that I would be accurate, so I'd rather not give a quote. I'm not sure I know the current number.
Okay, I spoke to a couple of the commissioners this week. And one of the figures I got from Andrew Miller was, you guys are a $150 million a year water company.
Close, but yeah, again, I'm not sure the exact figure.
And Kelly, what's our revenue for year, per year for our city? Where are we at? About right around 30 million. I've heard that number kicked around a few different times.
For all the funds?
Yeah, our annual revenue.
Estimated for 2024 is close to 42 million.
Forty-two, so just a little over one. Okay. Thanks, Kathy.
Kathy, can I ask, or actually, Charlie can answer this. What is the, how many people do we have full-time and part-time? Does anybody know off the top of their head?
Yeah, we're up to Kelly. Authorized FTEs for the city were 106.5. But our total number, if you add on part-time, then we're up to Kelly for that. She's got the list.
Total headcount of employees is 138.
Thank you. The point, I don't know if our attorneys would weigh in more on this, but in terms of HR positions, in my 18 years at Western, of course, it's apples to oranges, they have 2,000 employees. But since I was the communications director, anytime there was anything potentially controversial or litigious, I was made aware of it. And this is a question to you, Kathy. I couldn't, I can't even recall how many times we averted a risk, we averted a lawsuit, and that was because of HR professionalism. So my concern going forward without a specifically trained HR person is the very high increase in risk and lawsuits and employee centered things. So how is the risk mitigated by HR people? I mean, just the conversation, I remember, had huge impact, just talking to people in ways they understood.
Well, what I will say is, without going into specifics about the things that I've dealt with, this, I mean, being in HR as long as I have and being the point person where we've had situations or dealt with situations specifically where we've had former employees or current employees who have made claims. Having an HR person who's aware of and able to mitigate risks, knowing what needs to be documented, what needs to be investigated. I know from my personal experience, that has saved the PUD a lot of money. So I think it can be the difference. In public employment, it's a different mindset. And I, when I first got into my position, it was, it was an interesting mindset change for me because I had worked in private for quite a while before that. And it's interesting because there are nuisance claims that get, and that's what we call them essentially, and the, you can speak to this as well. Oftentimes nuisance claims get paid out in public employment. But it can be the difference between, you know, an insurance company paying a nuisance claim to essentially get rid of a tort claim for maybe 15 to $20,000, which, again, is it frustrating to have to pay any kind of claim? Yes. But from an insurance company's point of view, paying, you know, $15,000 is a drop in the bucket as compared to not having proper documentation or having someone who doesn't have the time to either investigate or to properly document or spend the time, you know, working with your attorneys to gather the information. It can be hundreds of thousands of dollars. So I guess in summary, to answer that question, I know that based on my experience, it can make all the difference from a risk perspective. There's, you know, PNC risk, and then there's employment risk. And employment risk is just a risk that just never ends. And from attending a lot of different training and dealing with a lot of different attorneys and going to a lot of different conferences, the one thing that gets added on to pretty much any kind of employment law claim is retaliation. And attorneys in the industry call it the side of fries that goes with everything, basically. Because no matter what you do, I know in my personal experience, if you have someone who's out on a leave, on a protected leave, for example, then often what will happen is they have something else come up, or you have someone who's under disciplinary action, they will have a protective leave that comes up during that process. It's just, it makes it really difficult to try to implement any kind of disciplinary action because if someone knows they're under performance improvement plan, for example, then often what will happen is they get a disability or they go out on a protected leave such as a stress-related illness or something along those lines. And so then anything you do after that point, you have to be careful not to be perceived as making any decisions based on a disability, for example. So I hope I'm making that clear. If anyone needs any clarification, I'm happy to try to provide it. But there's just so many intricacies and so many risks associated with employment law issues. And someone who knows that and has the proper training and how to deal with that and knows when they're in over their head and how to get help when they need it is just invaluable. One serious case can bankrupt a local government organization. So. I don't know if you want to add anything to that.
I completely agree with you. I think the things that we see most frequently are things like hostile work environment used incorrectly, of course.
Right.
Harassment and retaliation claims. Those are kind of the three that I see the most, and they're usually all tied together. And personnel and labor-related claims are some of the highest claims that our risk pools end up facing. Your risk pool CIAW has an average of $44,000 per claim. I think that actually might be a little higher with some of the other risk pools. So I guess that's a good thing for CIAW, but still, that's a significant amount of money for a single, for a claim. So you get one claim and you're down $45,000, or the risk pool is. So fully agree that there's a lot of risk that goes along with not having a fully staffed HR because people like me, we're not boots on the ground, right? I can't be in an office here and talking with employees that are coming in and sharing their concerns about a workplace issue. That's one of the things that's beneficial about having an HR in-house is that you can have that person there that is scoping out problems before they become big problems and helping to, you know, engage in corrective training, either for the employee or for the supervisor before it becomes a real problem and we end up with a claim.
One thing, and you can certainly attest to this, one of the reasons I should clarify why nuisance claims are often paid out is because insurance companies look at the, you know, the pros and cons of doing that. And if you have an employment law claim against you and say, you know, the jury decides that even though they don't really believe that person, they're going to award them, even if they award them a dollar. You, as the employer, because that gets awarded regardless of the amount, you are then responsible for their attorney's fees and their costs associated. So that's something that a lot of people don't know. So even if it's a, it's a token that they give to them, you are now responsible not only for your own legal costs, but theirs as well.
And the jury verdicts are huge these days, even though, you know, they don't, cities don't have the ability to pay. The jury verdicts have been significant in the last few years. And so it does oftentimes make more sense to go ahead and throw the nuisance money at the person in order to make it go away and not risk that big attorney fee payment at the end.
I'm trying to ask, how many employees does the PUD have right now?
We currently have, I think, 87.
Eighty-seven, and you have 1.5 HR, we get employees for 87 employees. And I was curious if I could ask some of the other directors questions about this. Chief McElroy, how long do you think that, like, Janine would spend helping you get one person through the interview process and then actually to the, you're hired?
Considering, I've been trying to hire for our vacancy since August quite a bit. It's a lot of applicants. And every time we do an oral board, she has to be involved. She has to be involved in certifying the list, setting up civil service meetings. Once they get to that process, she's, well, she's collecting the applications too through PST. Reaching out to them to see if they want their views and stuff like that. So that's, that's a lot of time itself. After they're certified, then they, they come back to us and we start, we ask her, we don't really touch them until we go, hey, let's set them up for a polygraph and set them up for a recite. Those initial things we go through right away. And then we go through our background process, all the way to the end where we're, we're trying to hire. So that's average of three months. We're going through, I think we have about 80 applicants since August. We haven't hired anybody else, any of those, yet. So it's, it's quite a lengthy process. I can go through this lawless, I have.
That's a lot of time.
Very long. It's the same thing with fire. They're doing the same thing. It's, it's a lot for one person to handle. And especially when that person is doing payroll and other items.
And I'm guessing that it's probably not a stringent for your departments. What do you, just giving one other person, right?
Yeah, I don't know what Janine did. I just gave her the job description, and then she did whatever she does. Yeah, I'm the one person to ask about this.
And Kelly, she's in your department, right? So how does that affect you, like, time-wise with her doing that? Does that take more than half of her time, or?
I wouldn't say half. Well, it depends on the week and day. So whenever it's high volume, it can be, you know, more than half of her time. But when it's low volume, which hasn't been low volume for quite some time, you know, it doesn't. So it kind of ebbs and flows. The hard part is that, you know, a lot of times we can't serve the other departments as well as we would like just because we, you know, our payroll person cannot do help of oral boards and set up interviews on the week that we're processing payroll, which, I mean, when we have to do that, it's quite stressful in those moments. So sometimes we have to say no to the other departments just so we can get payroll out the door because everybody wants payroll out the door on time. So we would like to be able to better serve the other departments, specifically police and fire, and have more flexibility, have more flexibility, because there's kind of windows right now where we really can't serve that role because of the other competibles.
I appreciate that from you all. I was kind of trying to paint a better picture of what Janine's doing because I see what Charlie does, and I don't necessarily see Janine working behind the scenes. And then I'm sure you probably bill us by the minute or by the hour, so that probably costs us quite a lot when we get you involved with it.
They, they don't get me involved unless they need to get me involved. But yes, I mean, it does cost the city money. I am, like I said, I'm not the boots-on-the-ground person. I'm the person they come to when we have something more complex. And certainly, there are things that I can't catch because I'm not.
Yeah.
So can you clarify then for everybody here, what exactly, do we have one person that is doing part-time sometimes, is what I'm gathering?
HR? Yeah, we have a full-time employee who does payroll and then her secondary duty is HR assistant.
Okay, so does she have the qualifications to be HR?
To be like an HR manager for us? No.
What would that take?
Bachelor's degree. We'd like a SHRM certification as well for that, include the job description in here, but it would require more. She, this is her, she described it to me coming in, her first HR related role.
So for reasonability, we have so much staffing and we're bringing on staffing. Our budget's tight. We just raised a levy for the police officers a few years ago, for the fire department this year. We are definitely spending a lot. So for practical reasons, we have somebody who's doing part-time sometimes in HR who can accommodate the interviews. I would almost suggest out of 80 applicants, something might be wrong with the way that we're doing those interviews or maybe we can get a consultant agency to look into some of that possibly and then wean them before they get to you, so you don't have to waste so much time. But consultants are very valuable. And, you know, once we have our system staffed up, then that would preserve that. So in later time, when the finances are a little bit more available than we have that. Because there's, there's been a couple of positions that have been requested, and it really wasn't requested, like if we increase the police department, we increase the fire department. We didn't include those in the levies, that we're also going to now increasing the HR position. So there's expertise that you can do, Charlie, of course, that a consultant can support. In a lot of cases, lawsuits, like you're saying, that out of the 87 employees, hundreds of thousands of dollars could have been spent on lawsuits from, from employees suing the supervisors there, I would imagine, or something like that, suing PUD because of harassment or that. So it's kind of protecting the company in a way. But do we have, have we seen that with our complaints here? Are we having people file harassment charges against our supervisors or things like that? Is that something that's happening, Nikki? Is that something that's happening, Nikki?
So.
Without getting into the names, of course.
Without giving names, um, those are things that we've heard rumblings about and, um, have attempted to deal with them in an appropriate.
So if the employees are a little bit discouraged or something like that, I just don't want the recourse also to seem like we're, we're getting an advocate legally against them on the city's behalf. The HR, like you said, works in behalf of the employee and the business. But ultimately it's the city hiring them, it's the city paying them, it's the executive saying it's managing them. And so it's, it's kind of an advocate for the city, uh, against dismantle employees who may have adjusted into to want to speak up and speak out. So that could be something there too. Now that's a little bit besides the point. I think financially, can we afford it? And that's really what's on the table. Can we afford a full-time HR position? Uh, what's the actual cost and with Charlie? Um, your position is HR in a way and understanding you're not going to have that bachelor's degree and all the expertise, but with legal supports, uh, and also with, uh, with consultants, Janine supporting interview processes without part-time scheduling. Now, we're not going to do this during payroll week. Seems like it's possible to keep going, um, the way it is and then and then visit maybe the twenty point five, point two six budget.
So I'm, I'm going to step in because, um, because I work intimately with all these individuals and I can tell you that there's a lot of things that we want to see completed that I'll, I'll, I'll go to Charlie and I'll say, I need this and this, and he'll say, I, I don't have time to do that. So he has, I don't know if you've seen his whiteboard, he's got a whiteboard and it's got lots of different categories in it. And there's a lot of things that cover that board and there's things that are not being completed that are creating problems for us because he doesn't have time because he's also doing HR.
Um, what kinds of things? Just like general?
Our, our, our policies for one thing, we're not able to get a lot of our policies done. We have a policy handbook that we need to complete. Um, today I was, um, inquiring about, um, who are our partners and who are not our partners regarding um, who needs to be, um, paying a deposit fee down at the community center when they use it. And that's something that we discussed back in October, November, and Charlie has not had time to deal with that. He just has not had time to deal with that. And today we ran into a situation, a very disgruntled individual that, um, we shouldn't have had to deal with that because it should have been in place. There's a lot of things like that that are happening that need to take place. And I guess what bothers me the most is that we these seats that we sit in, they're not our seats. They belong to the people and we need to be taking care of the people. We have the funding to take, to bring in an HR person. And quite honestly, I don't know how we can afford not to bring in somebody given, I think there were some great examples that were given as to what can happen to a city. We could go bankrupt. I've been here, this is my seventh year and I can tell you, we've had some near misses. I mean, some nights that there's several of us who have lost sleep because we just don't know what's going to happen next. We've been very fortunate that we haven't been sued to the max, but we need this position in order to protect not only the city, but to protect the citizens because that's what our job is. When we sit in those seats, we represent the city and we're supposed to be taken care of now. And, um, um, tonight I know, I know there's, I, I, I feel like there's almost like this, um, tug of war, and I didn't want this to be a tug of war. I just wanted you to have information as far as exactly what an HR person does because it's so important for you to know in order to make a decision.
Yeah, I wrote down my thoughts. Um, this is the first time we've had a city manager who is not also our slash attorney or finance director or city clerk. It has always been combined with other, another position. You're our first full-time city manager. I do not believe it is in our best interest to free up your time from HR so you can mentor and coach and work on organizational development. We have a very tight budget and I will not ask taxpayers to fund another high-paying position when we can make do with what we have, like we always have done. On one hand, we are talking about charging people for their sidewalks and on the other hand, you are wanting to add administration positions. We need to learn how to prioritize and live within our means. So that's my thought on this.
We did get the grant for the sidewalk, so that's really fantastic. Mark came through for us on that. And yeah, he came through for us on that. But the truth of the matter is, is that we've just grown to a place where our, our city administrator, our city manager can no longer do the job that was done before. And I can tell you when I came on, the, um, city manager that we had, who was our attorney, who was our HR person, um, who also was our city admin playing three positions, that was a hotbed for being sued. An absolute hotbed for being sued.
What I'm seeing with what keeps being brought back to the council is that we used to have a well-oiled machine and now we're bringing in people that are no longer able to multitask. And so it's, it's just unfortunate because I think that we need to work with what we have like we've done because it works and we don't have the money to continue pulling from the citizens.
You're absolutely right. We did have people who could multitask. The city was also a lot smaller. The requirements were not as great. And as the city has grown, so have the requirements.
What was the city like in twenty sixteen under Keith Wagner? I was, I would almost invite him in to see, you know, he had a city that he was running and he was doing part-time, but he was really focused on the city. He was focused here, not, not so much abroad. Um, but he had a city manager that was also dealing with a lot within the city and they were tackling the priority tasks. I, I honestly think Charlie's the type of personality, uh, you run out what you're going for, you study what it is, you have a lot of great ideas. If you're wanting to create policy and redo votes, it's what your training and background is and that's what's leading you that direction. Um, but within our scope, within the city, should that be the priority? Um, but we're updating the number of policies for the RCW, maybe not necessary, but just to bring this in line with Olympia. Um, and so we're trying to aim that way. It seems like to me, um, when we, we should be able to work within our means and get that net cap back up there and, and show a budget that's like, we not only have this, but we have more than enough. When we're begging the community for more firefighters, for police cars, for school, ISO officers, for sidewalks, for all this stuff, and we're reaching for grants that's actually coming out of our property taxes and basically in my opinion, smuggle through the system so that we can make for that change back. It's not in a good position. We should have more than enough where we're not requesting so many grants. Um, I don't know.
Uh, Kathy, can I ask, uh, about how, uh, an HR person can help with the efficiency of an organization, you know, with employees? Uh, because you know, efficiency could involve, you know, people not being hired, people leaving, you know, the silver tsunami.
Kind of a broad question. I think in any number of ways. Um, I think that like I said, as, as part of the strategic, like, uh, at the PUD, for example, we've placed a lot of emphasis on our strategic planning process. We did that six years ago and then we just redid that, um, year and a half ago. And so one of the things that we focused on in our strategic planning is our staffing processes and strategic, uh, um, succession planning as well. So I think that, that's an area where you can cut out a lot of chat. Basically you could really decide that how, how you want to spend your time. How do you want to prioritize your, your? So I guess one example I could give you instead of just being more broad is that one of the things that we've really focused on is not just replacing positions. When we have an opening, if we have a retirement, then one of the things that, um, I really like to do is focus on whether, you know, restructuring is going to be necessary, looking at the positions. Often I think in public agencies, there's a tendency to just hire. You know, there's a seat, you need to fill it, so you just continue doing that. In some areas, of course, that makes sense when you're talking about a, a police or a fire department, for example, that, that certainly makes sense. But when you're talking about an engineering department, if you're talking about an IT department, things change. For example, um, our GIS department, for example, we have a need for more GIS positions and it's a more of a specialty than it was when I started ten years ago. So we, one of the things I really try to do is look at whether restructuring is a good idea. Instead of just replacing a position, um, can some of those duties be absorbed into another position? For example, um, is there another position that, you know, is coming up in, in, in five years? Is there a, another priority where we can kind of disperse, you know, our budgetary funds and focus on, you know, something else that we're going to need? So that's something that I think we've, at least I would like to think that we've been really proactive about. So I think you can really focus your, the staffing money where, where you need it the most. So you're not just replacing positions, you're not just hiring to hire, you are focusing on, uh, where is that money? Where are those funds? Um, going to do the most good for operations now and five, ten, fifteen years in the future. So I think that's one really concrete example where I've really tried to focus on, um, you know, strategic focus as far as staffing and employment. So um, I can probably give you other examples, but I think that's one where you can really, when you're talking about a position that between pay and benefits is going to be anywhere between, you know, a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars on the average because really benefits are going to add about fifty-five percent. I'm not sure what your percentage is, but I think ours is around sixty percent um, of, of income when you're talking about a, about benefit structure. You really want to make sure that you are spending that in the most appropriate place where it's going to do the most good. Um, where do you need those man-hours? Where do you need the most help? So.
So you take care of operations forecasting too for the PUD?
Uh, I take care of, I'm a big part of operate, well, operations in general, not operations from a, you know, where's the water going so much, but more.
Manpower?
Manpower. Yes.
Operations forecasting for the manpower?
Correct.
To be, okay.
Yes.
A lot of businesses, it's usually your directors that determine with their crew needs and then it's loaded up through the executive branch into the CEO's table. So the CEO understands the needs of their departments and they're making the best decisions for the financial stability of the company. But, uh, I've been, I've experienced companies where the HR, uh, has stepped into that position for the CEO and it, it didn't work out as well. Now, I'm not saying it doesn't work out as well and I'm glad that that works great for PUD. But I've seen it where companies have had a, had a, you know, the HR got, there was a lot of friction where where the directors and the CEOs and the executive branch, I would imagine Charlie and the mayor would say, our, our planning department needs, not HR saying this is what you should do or this is.
Well, let me be clear. I'm not making those decisions for everybody and telling them what they're going to do. It's a collaborative process. I mean, we have our general manager who's responsible for all the administrative functions in the district. And then we have our, our, you know, management team, which is essentially, you know, all of our managers where I'm the HR manager. We have an IT manager, we have an operations manager, um, you know, and so forth. Um, so it's a collaborative process. And so I work together with those departments to figure out what their staffing needs are. Um, but ultimately am I responsible for the staffing function? Yes. And strategic planning for how we're going to get those positions built, how are we tooling those positions? I mean, I'm not dictating what they need necessarily, but am I the person that works with them to try to figure out how we can build those needs in the most economical way and the most operationally efficient way? Yes. So that's a big part of my function. Yeah.
By understanding the hours, say, this part of the departments are using twenty-two, twenty-two hundred man-hours to accomplish these goals. Um, and so you have a really good understanding of those type of workflows and you can say, I think we can get it done in eighteen hundred. Um, we probably could maybe pull back here and we can put that as a four hundred hours of resources for just other.
I think I look at it from a, a higher level view. I mean, I'm not spending a lot of time looking at the total number of hours necessarily. It's more looking at, I mean, this is more of a strategic planning process, like where do we need? So, okay, if we have a retirement, for example, and we have an engineering position and that person for the past twenty years is focused on say, this little portion of, you know, what they're doing, but really we don't have as much of a need for seventy-five percent of their position. Right? Things have just changed or technology has changed. And instead we can take most of the, the funds that we normally spend on that position and, you know, maybe twenty-five percent of that position can be absorbed and a lot of those tasks can be outsourced to other, other people that can pick those up. For example, maybe someone's looking to expand their position a little bit and maybe branch out a little bit and they're looking for more responsibility. That's great. We can kind of, you know, take off some of those duties and then the rest of that position, maybe we can focus those funds on, um, GIS, for example, or, um, asset management, for example. So I'm talking about more of a higher level view. I mean, I'm not really getting into the weeds necessarily on, okay, this is how many hours we're going to focus on. It's more of a do we really need to replace that position and how can we best serve the operational needs of the district moving forward on what we need, you know, with our new building, with the projects that we have coming up, with the needs of, um, you know, what the engineering department projects are going to be, what our capital improvement process, process is going to be for the next, you know, ten years. So it's a very collaborative process, but it's very much looking forward to the future and not just saying, okay, we're just going to replace a position. Does that make more sense?
Yeah, being part of the team, working with the team, but ultimately the team's going to know the needs and then HR is probably going to be able to facilitate by saying, hey, maybe this person is is asking this or we have so many hours here. In a lot of cases, uh, the city's totally different, obviously. We know that. I've seen that it moves a lot slower. They're not looking at the profit base to increase for the taxpayer in many cases. They, they like, like you said, we represent the citizen, so we should be, but that's not necessarily how the city works. But in a business, you're looking at what's profitable, what's financially sound. How can we return money back to the company's coffers and to the employees and keep building up the company? And so a lot of times, uh, with HR positions such as that role, um, they're kind of set in certain standards such as obviously recruitment, retainment, not so much the training, but maybe facilitating some of the HR required training, um, doing up the, the benefits package. Usually that's a busy season around September, through November, um, handling employee complaints, but usually there's not a huge amount of those. Um, depending on the size of business, what the morale levels are like. Um, but I've seen a lot more of like the operational hours things for successful companies. Maybe Charlie can attest to this because good to great, Jim Collins, folks like that, you see successful companies, that's usually done in the boardroom with the execs knowing what teams need. And collaborating with the HR, what, what happens. But I think for efficiency example, um, I just see that, um, like you said, it's, it's a collaboration of a lot more than just the HR. An HR coming in isn't going to make everything run efficient. It should be our executive branch that's making this decision, run efficient. It's important, but help it, but it's, it's not.
Uh, I could just weigh in on that a little bit. My experience working with HR in other organizations, HR has a certain lens on the people in the organization that nobody else really keeps. They don't keep that focus. And so when you're having these conversations about the future, yes, your managers, your directors are going to say, hey, we think we need this. But HR is going to add some value to that by providing a different perspective sometimes and saying, hey, have you thought about this and this and this as well? And then it's like, oh, okay, well, maybe we need to rethink that. So that's where the value add often comes. But yeah, it's typically driven, you know, by the people doing work.
So Charlie, if I could kind of hack away at you here for a minute? I wrote a lot of stuff down and my handwriting's not very good, but, um, so, uh, one of, one of the things I noticed, um, uh, from the previous council meeting where, uh, we decided not to include this on the budget amendment was that we were gonna, you know, a transparent, open and honest conversation. And I, I think those were my exact words and I agree to that. And that's exactly what we're having right now. Um, and I, and I, I appreciate, um, that effort on your guys' part. Um, uh, one of, one of the things I noticed though was that, um, there, there hasn't been any kind of a creative idea or, you know, either a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars a year salary and benefits. And then the other option is nothing, right? Um, I know you touched on, uh, uh, talking to, uh, their MRSC and they mentioned a company called Archbright and a couple of the other ones, but they don't really, uh, they, they focus more on short term, which is kind of what it seems like we need. Um, uh, it was interesting when, uh, Kelly was talking about, uh, Janine and what she does. And sometimes we can't do this, we can't do that because, uh, you know, she's got to get payroll out, yet like point five FTE wasn't even considered to be, you know, put into finance, you know, since, since something low cost. So, something low cost because as the mayor stated, yes, we do represent the taxpayers and yes, even though we might have this money in the budget right now, we might, it, it might be set aside for right now, what happens in November when we come to vote to increase the, uh, property taxes by one percent and we all say, no, we don't want to do it. Because we seem to have plenty of money, right? I mean, we, we have money when we want something, but when it's not something we want, we don't have the money. So, um, I'm, I'm just kind of disappointed to see that, you know, we, we didn't bring any other, any other ideas to the table other than, um, this is gonna, this is gonna reduce risk. Um, this is, this is going to save the, you know, city thousands to hundreds of thousands of dollars. But we're not offering any other Any other ideas, any other options, um. Just. Anything that, did, is there anything else that you guys were going to bring forward or what was this it?
This is our recommendation. This is our professional recommendation in both the budget amendment and still our professional recommendation. We can certainly talk alternatives with the council. You know, this idea is not supported, we're going to have to try to make the best of our situation and we're going to have to look at some additional alternatives in that process. One of the reasons we didn't bring any alternatives is we look pretty broadly at cities. And if you look at cities with more than a hundred employees in the state of Washington, all of them. All of them have at least one full-time HR position. Except us. So we are an outlier and they all have in-house staff. Um, there was also a question about. Cities with city administrators. And full-time HR professionals, we looked at our comparable cities. Um, there are eight of them, one of them, which is small, still a common contracts, a lot of services, does not have a city admin, does not have an HR position. But they do have a city administrator. The others all have administration and HR. So. It would be pretty out of the box for us to look at alternatives that. Are uncommon in the state uh, for our types of needs. Um, if we found other models out there, we would certainly be looking at those and bringing those forward to you. We just didn't. Everybody's got core HR staff, that's how cities handle HR. They definitely use consultants. MRSC recommended some. When we did our class in comp study. We heard from a bunch of consultants that do HR type stuff. Some of them were on that list. Uh, a lot of those consultants, we actually use consultants for HR, right? We use Nikki for HR. Um, she helps us with labor negotiations. When we did our class in comp study, we hired a firm to help us with that. We hired a firm to help us to appoint with our personal policy man. So we do use consultants around the edges, but for core HR staff, really what we need, in our opinion. Professionally, um, we, we have a need and. One of the issues we have is Janine is, is a union, she's a, a union member, her position's in the union. So you have a union member doing confidential HR work, which has all kinds of risk in and of itself. You then have me as the manager of managers essentially, uh, the top manager in the city. Trying to do HR and I've, I've heard from employees who. And I've heard from unions where employees have had issues that they're not comfortable bringing with me because that's elevating it to the very top of the organization. Um, that's a challenge for an organization. That's why having an HR in-house position as a neutral broker, that's not management. And that. Isn't a union member either. Um, offers you a lot of value, offers you a conduit and it offers you the ability to. To mitigate risk that you otherwise couldn't mitigate, but also to. Um, get a lot of stuff done with that people, sole people focus, which I can tell you in my, in my role, I'm all over. Um, similar to Janine, there are times like we're negotiating with all three unions. I did pretty much all HR for weeks on end. Um, and there are other times where it dies down a little bit, but it rarely dies down much. There's always something HR. Um, or there's an HR, you know, personnel issue that comes up that just consumes days on end because you have to drop everything into that and that's where other things don't. Um, so. That's a long-winded answer.
Who, Kathy? Who is your direct boss?
Our director.
George, okay, so the HR. Person, if you guys were to hire an HR manager. You would be their direct boss, Charlie? That's the way it's set up, okay, so it kind of. It kind of defeats the purpose a little bit then, doesn't it? With, you know, it's, it's not a neutral person on an island, right?
HR is going to have their, their position and perspective on it and we have great respect for that, just like I have great respect for Mark's engineering expertise. But I'm not going to second guess him on his engineering, similar with HR, I'm not going to second guess their technical expertise. So that's the value add. And we talked about maybe having a report in other, other places as well. And there are other options for that, but it would be into a director in our city. Or to the mayor, I mean, those are the only other options I could.
Okay. I was under the impression when we heard from the bargaining units as well from the packet, are they not?
Yeah, we, we invited the bargaining units. Uh, I heard from one today that they asked me that they, they would prefer to stay neutral on the topic. Uh, you did hear from the fire department, the fire uh, union, I thought previously in writing, um, and police, I haven't heard. But we made them aware because we work with them a lot and service to them is also slow. At times because still have so much time in the day to get stuff to everybody.
Okay. I was curious if we could hear their perspective, since they've got a lot of stake in this and they deal with it every day.
Uh, can I ask you another risk question? I, I was cute, I was uh, taken by the outlier statement that. We're the only city of comparable size without an HR professional. Uh, how vulnerable would that make us in a lawsuit? I imagine an aggressive lawyer would go up, would be all over that.
So the area that I can see it being probably most impactful is in. Litigation where one of the assertions is failure to train. Right? HR provides so much value when it comes to overall. Organization-wide training and one of the things that you see in tort claims. Is an assertion that the organization has failed to fail to train and therefore is liable for certain actions taken by employees. Um. I don't love that optic um, for you. And certainly there are other ways that. Um, HR comes into play in mitigating those legal risks, like for example. Kathy brought up the intersecting leave laws, right? There are so many leave laws that come into play. For us, um, say we have FMLA, we have PSL, we have PFML, we have W lad, we have. Um, DV leave, we have all of these intersecting leave laws and if you do it wrong. Your employees are going to sue you, right? Um, and. That's an area that's really complex, like when is FMLA triggered versus when is PFML triggered versus when is PSL triggered? Um, and you, it's helpful to have somebody onsite working through those things with employees, um.
Do you know what all of those things mean and like how to navigate those personally as a, as our city attorney?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and so say. Uh, I'm sure we're not having ten people at a time go on, you know, FMLA and all these other things, so. Isn't that just something you could just handle?
It's something I can handle, yeah. But I'm again, not onsite.
Right, but you're, you're on the, you're on the screen. Every council meeting and uh, you're an email and a phone call away, right? Which, which is. We, we have your own retainer, right? You're not a. An official employee of the city until we're actually paying you in that capacity. Okay, so.
Um, your hourly rate is two hundred and twelve an hour.
When you did your comparable cities, it looked like it was one thousand to twenty-five hundred people in those cities, is that correct?
It's ten thousand to twenty-five thousand.
Um, and our city's twelve thousand, so we kind of went to the, to the higher end. I would see a lot of cities above fifteen to twenty-five, especially up higher. Having more capability, more staffing, things like that. Um, were we not able to reach to a mid-range, let's say six to fourteen thousand or eight to fifteen thousand?
We, we started out looking at ten to twenty-five thousand, um. And, and we then, you know, really the, the metric, and this is Sherm's metric, I know it's already fallen in the, in the packet. About this, the metric at this point, based on research twenty-twenty-two. Is that the city should, or anybody should have. One point seven HR employees per one hundred people in the organization. So you focus more on the organization's side, which is an indicator somewhat of complexity, not always. Uh, but then you can throw in complexity with us as well. As well, because we have so many different departments, different specialties, different areas, different bargaining units. So you got all that. So no, we do not look uh, down to six thousand, but our comparables, our comparable. Uh, jurisdictions that we used for ASME bargaining, uh, we've got a report in there on those as well. And when you look at those, still seven of the eight had an HR position in administration.
And those are city positions, but in business, uh, you're, you're suggesting that seventeen HR people for every thousand employees would be usable.
Yeah. That's, that's what. The measure was, at least that came out of the recent survey from Sherm and Sherm has three hundred and forty thousand members in a hundred and eighty countries, they're not small, so. They're across all sectors. Uh, that gives you some idea. Uh, the number I, we previously provided was one, now we found this latest research. Um, but even, you know, anywhere in that range would be. A good place to start.
So, Stella, I'm, I'm sorry. Uh, I was just gonna speak to that, the, the listing. We also uh, looked at it by number of F T U because. The number of employees you have also has a huge impact on whether you need HR, so um. Of the forty-two cities, we look back, including City Woolly, we're about in the middle. Um, the middle of the pack um, on number of F T Vs. So, um, you know, about half the cities have. Smaller, um. Smaller number of people and have, have bigger and again, like Charlie said, we're the only ones that. Don't have.
So we went with the ranges of thousand to, or ten thousand to twenty-five thousand and we're at the bottom of that range at twelve thousand.
We're actually at thirteen.
Thirteen thousand. Thirteen thousand, but we're saying that the fifty percent range has. About more employees, so are we overstaffed? I mean, that raises an interesting question right there.
It's hard to look at different places and where, what they uh, what they have. A lot of agencies um, contract out their police so they don't have the empty police. Um, almost every agency uh, contracts out solid waste, so they don't have. Solid waste employees, they still have to provide that service and people's, their, their citizens still have to pay for it. Um, but they contract out that to a company, um, so then they don't have those. Employees to.
So you saw in the ten thousand to twenty-five thousand range, uh, it was. City of Woodinville and ourselves, and even I double-taped on Woodinville, so well, you know, I would expect they would have it. Uh, and the reason why is they have forty-four employees and they contract police, they contract fire, they. Uh, contract solid waste, so they don't have all of those employees, they don't have the same HR need that we do because we do that stuff in-house. So that's where population can be really misleading. A lot of the newer. King County in particular. Incorporations that occurred are, a lot of those are contract cities, a lot of those in Homish County cities are contract cities, too, meaning they contract for just about as much as they can. First start up and then sometimes they let go of that and do their own thing and sometimes they.
Oh, I was just gonna ask, um, being the director position, just clarifying that. Um, you're looking for a non-union. Position, but. So in, in past discussions, it was brought up that after this, the next step is another part-time person for HR to be brought on as well. Is that going to be a union or not?
That would be a non-union position, that would be our intention. Yeah, I mean, we have to work that out with the union. We let them know that. And the reason for that is the confidential work.
Right.
So. Touching on that confidential work, so uh. What does Janine not handle that you have to handle not being in the union? Is, I mean. Bro- broadly, I, I don't want specifics, but. You know, I don't, I don't want to know about certain people's cases, but. Um, you know, things that Janine just simply cannot handle if she's.
There are things like, for example, from her bargaining unit, which is all of public works, finance, a lot of the city hall support staff. Where she has to immediately give it up to me because there's all kinds of.
It's like what we do. Are uh, and how many years is this collective bargaining agreement good for right now? The one that, the one that we just passed?
Three years.
Three years, okay, so yeah, um. It, that's, that's pretty standard across the board, um. As far as, like, our, our HR person at Burlington doesn't sit in the room with us and go over things, it's our city administrator. And our um. Uh, union reps, so like our, our HR is not in there. In the trenches doing union negotiations at even, you know. Even though that's not a comparable city, it's a much larger market than we are. And uh, they're actually under the one point seven. Um, that um. This article is recommending to. Being a, a city with a much higher. Budget than we have, so. As I point that out for, um, so that's one of the things Janine can't do is collective bargaining and that makes complete sense. Um, the other, the other one is, um, you're looking for a bachelor's degree, right, for, for this person, but we were. Um. We're also looking at a uh, that we brought in for interviews. Um, people for uh, public works director that didn't meet our minimum requirements of having a. Uh, P E, right? So, I mean, we're. We had three candidates and two of them didn't even meet our requirements for that, so. I mean, it, it, it's kind of, it, when, when you, when you bring people in for a job interview, you kind of pick. Pick the best person, right? The best person suited for the job. Uh. Degrees mean something to a certain extent, but in, in another extent, it's. Uh, if Janine needs more up-to-date HR practices, training, then we could send her to training, just like we send. Uh, Kelly uh, to trainings and we send our. Uh, deputy clerk to trainings and, you know, I mean, training's a big part of government, right? So everybody's always gone to trainings, everybody's always gone to conferences. You know, stuff like that. I mean, you go to conferences, you go, you've been to some A W C stuff, all you have, um, you know. Me and you and you went to an A W C thing not too long ago. Um. So, a- again, I'd, I'd like to work. I, I think we really need to focus on working with what we have, um. Kelly brought up some good points about being understaffed when Janine's doing other things. Uh, that's something that uh, a lot of cities use uh. Uh, use a halftime. Employee for, or even um, sometimes they get creative and they do a point six F T E. And as you know, when you're a point six F T E, you're over that halftime threshold, so now you, now you get a certain amount of benefits in retirement too. Which makes that position much more attractive, so. Um, a lot of things to think about.
We can talk a little bit more about confidential work and Nikki, I don't know if you want to address that a little bit, just what the importance that is and.
Yes, I think that um, maybe a couple of things got missed. Um, obviously, we're not using Janine for grievance-type work and trying to keep her out of that process. Also, all of the confidential medical stuff, um, it's. Pretty. Uncomfortable to have somebody in the union having access to all of the confidential files. Um, we'd like that to be a, a separate. Non-union position. Um. Typically. These positions are not union positions, so it is an uncomfortable dynamic to have. The person in the union and with access to all of these various employee files. It should be a non-union.
Do, do you handle the confidential medical stuff or does Charlie handle the confidential medical stuff? Or is it a mixture of the both?
So, um. I'll let you answer that.
Uh, Janine's handling all the confidential medical stuff, that's the reality of it, um. Because we don't have a lot of other options.
And that's, that's uncomfortable, but you're a lawyer, is that illegal?
Is it illegal?
Is it illegal that Janine's doing these things or is it just? Something that's.
It is not best practice.
Not best practice.
It is not best practice.
Okay, but not illegal.
Being an employee and the report that she has with. I assume that it's going fairly well, that people feel comfortable going to her with what they need to. No?
We, we don't fully know that. I mean, and so that's a hard question to answer, um.
And I hate to say. I mean, we're using like Janine's name, but I know she's gonna feel uh, extremely uncomfortable with that. Um, Janine is a great uh. Person to talk to for the staff. She. Staff love Janine and they'll feel comfortable um, going to her, but I know that um. That it's challenging to ask someone to do. Way to, to do more than what their position is, um. Would she be willing to do that? Have we asked her if she's, if this is a position that she likes doing and if she would like to do more of it? To be that HR manager, to, to be, yeah, more HR, if we could get somebody in to help fill the tasks of her. Other things so that she could handle. More responsibility, is that something she'd be willing to do? I haven't specifically asked her that question. Um, the challenging part is, um. You need one primary person. Um, the challenging part is, um, you need one primary person to do payroll and you can, um, you can't hand over some tasks, you know, like, um, like, I've been helping, um, just fill out, uh, employee payroll change forms, which is anytime you have a change in your payroll, you, you increase a step, you increase longevity. We fill out a form, what it was before, what it is now, um, you know, those kind of things, they could be passed off to somebody, um, in a part-time capacity, you know, finance got a, um, an additional part-time employee. Those sorts of on-the-fringe tasks can be passed off to another employee. But the process of, um, processing payroll can't quite be segmented, can't quite be cut in half and given to somebody else. So, we still need a virtually full-time payroll person.
Even the cabinet's part-time does, right? Payroll and H R. And so, that's, that's actually a position. It's not uncommon to see payroll and H R, a combined position, especially for interview setups, things like that. Confidential stuff, um, and I know you're busy, but ultimately, that would be on your plates. That's, that's part of the job description when city, city manager, um, and then contracting out, uh, consulting, things like that. I, I keep going back to that, at least right now, just simply on the, the, the cost analysis. The part-time, the, the Councilman Allen, uh, put forth, I mean, that sounds like something that, that might be a, a huge benefit. Um, until we have definite that we have the coin that we need, you know, and, and, uh, we're really unsure about inflation and we hear about that with every levy passed, this is what we wanna do. And maybe when we first had our safety meeting, the levy was for, the levy proposal was for two people, maybe up to four. And then it went in the grant proposal, four to eight to twelve. We brought that back down to a mid-range of eight, which ended up being the full range in the original conversation. So, we are, we are spending holes and we're asking a lot of our citizens. Um, and like you said, we represent them, um, and they wanna have service. I, I have a neighbor in War Two who was trying to get a hold of the city and found a phone tree at every turn and was so upset that she actually contacted my wife. My wife was able to get in contact just to get garbage can delivery. Um, so, we want people to have that kind of availability and service, but within needs. And so, I don't know if we can do this, uh, wing this without a hundred and forty, four, a hundred and forty-nine thousand. If, if, you know, there's mentorship, which is great, Charlie, and it's really appreciated that to take that time to share that skill set with different employees, especially up-and-coming directors or directors that exist, things like that. But if that's, that's what the city's gonna pay for is, hey, we're gonna get a mentor in here and we're also gonna get an H R and the benefit we get from paying a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year for H R is gonna have somebody who can, you know, counsel, mentor the staff, it might not be the right timing for that. Especially after levies, we're looking at probably a school levy coming down the pipe pretty quick, I would imagine. I keep hearing about Cascade Middle School, I keep hearing about other things. Um, who knows with the future of all? And so, I almost feel like we need to tighten our belts right now until we know a little bit more about the economy. And it doesn't mean our economy, but the outside economy of the state even, but Seattle's buildings are decreasing in value so quickly that the taxable value of those buildings is becoming, uh, a burden to the, to the state or to the city, entity state. Uh, and it's not just Seattle, it's, it's in Atlanta, it's in New York, it's in San Francisco. I mean, the buildings are, are crushing down in value. And until we see how that's gonna wing out through the system, the feds are looking at raising rates, we're looking at the quantitative easing not working because the prices didn't go down. If they drop the rates, people are gonna be buying more stuff, but now at the prices they were when they were supposed to go down. So, that's gonna tighten things up through inflation again. So, it's just a bad time to spend money. And I don't know if I'm wrong or whatnot, I, I see this, this.
Well, one of the benefits of having a consulting company do pick up a lot of the tasks that we need done as far as like the development and stuff like that, we don't have to keep paying them, right? They can, we can use them for a task and then we'll, we'll see you later. We'll, we'll call you next time we need you. But, you know, we bring, we bring in an H R manager and, uh, and then it's, uh, a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars a year. And, I mean, what, what would happen if the P U D decided they couldn't afford you anymore? Would it be hard for them to get rid of you? Yeah, the, 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 the laugh kind of answers the question.
So, if they decided that they no longer could pay for my positions, then a- as long as they weren't getting rid of me for any protected reason, then that's what would happen.
Right, but I, I don't, I mean, I, I can't see, you know, when, when a city does budget cuts and, you know, I've seen this time and time again, it's, you know, departments, you need to start tightening your belts. Admin's always the last one to get squeezed, right? And it, it's true, but it's, it's just, it's just a fact of, um, how entities operate. Um, so, you know, like Nick was saying, uh, our economy is very unsure right now. We're looking at adding a high-dollar position, um, mainly, mainly to mitigate, uh, risk that it, it, it's, it's an unknown, unknown, right, risk is, so. Uh, adding, adding a position of that magnitude and of something that we probably, that probably won't be the first thing to get cut if we start getting into financial trouble as a city. Um, you know, because, oh, well, now, now we're having to cut people and, um, Nikki brought up a good point, the most dangerous time, uh, of an, an employee is the off-boarding, right? The off-boarding, so, hey, we gotta get rid of six union guys, uh, we're getting rid of our garbage department because we can't afford them anymore. Uh, you know, we're getting rid of two of the street department guys and, uh, the parks, we're keeping one, right? Well, now, all these guys, you know, we, they don't, the budget doesn't get passed to keep them. And so, it's not like this position that we're adding is gonna be the first to go because we're gonna need that H R position to now make sure that we're not getting sued for letting all these union members go because we've already spent all of our money. So, I mean, it's, it's, and, and, and in a, in a case like that of having the offload employees because we don't have any money as a city, that's something that we could contract out too. We could say, hey, Archbrite, um, you know, we're in trouble and you guys, we, we need you guys for like a week. We need you to come in, take a look at all this stuff, analyze it all and then, um, you know, ha- have a best path to move forward.
How would that work out if we were trying to outsource hiring for police or fire or one of the other departments?
It's being done a lot of places, so I think it's something that, that, as far as strategic planning, something that we probably, uh, we've talked about looking into as far as regional hire authorities and those things, so the options are there. Um, but to Council McKeskey's point, you know, we, we've been a city that's had multiple hats for, forever. And the amount, the job that Janine does is phenomenal. And, uh, we talk about she's doing part H R, she's doing part payroll. Sometimes I feel bad because I spend more time in her office because of my needs right now. She's also doing civil service, so with the competitive market that we're in right now, between me and Dan alone with police and fire hiring, he sent eighty candidates. You talk about getting a consultant. Consultants can tell you the same thing. I had fifty-five candidates where ten years ago, if I had one position open, I would have two hundred people knocking at the door that were not only qualified, but willing, able and, and could pass the backgrounds and everything with that. This testing we're in right now, I had fifty-five. And of the fifty-five, I got down to nine positions that were qualified, didn't have felony convictions, didn't have some kind of automatic disqualifier that didn't allow us to go forward with them. So, then I gotta go to Janine, she's gotta go get civil service commissioners to come to the table, jockey those folks back and forth, get scheduling, take time out of her payroll. We've gotta be cognizant of when those two payrolls are. Get her time to put these lists together, to put the, uh, oral boards, to put the scoring, the testing, the written scores. She's gotta sit in and manage those positions. I mean, the amount of time and effort and the phone calls she's gotta do to set all those up. Then, we just got done with the civil service a little bit ago on her vacation. So, she had to come in to do it, didn't have to, but she's one of those people that wears those extra hats and is willing to do it. Now, we've, we've got the civil service done, I got the test done, I've gotta do chief's interviews. Then she's gonna be setting up next week, trying to get coordinated a psychological test and then she's gotta get those results back. I mean, we're talking about a person that should or does, not should, does have forty hours a week of work doing payroll, but we've got her wearing three or four different hats. And then all of us to have a consultant person who would be calling up or zooming or whatever, it's, it's, it's not friendly, it's not feasible, it's, it's seems counterproductive. I would love to have Nikki or a person like Nikki here forty hours a week too. Right now, we have that ability to have her on a retainer to call and email and stuff. And we do when we have to, but at two hundred and twelve dollars an hour, that's four hundred grand a year uh, for that position, if we need multiples. It, it just seems risk-wise, we're getting to a point where, you're right, we probably need a halftime position, but we really probably need a time and a half. And how we get there and how we fund it, if even it comes a little bit from each one of us, like we kinda do to pay for an I T to, to get us all the services we need. We're, we're kinda trending where we need to find a way to make it happen in my mind. Uh, but we do have phenomenal resource in Janine, just how long can we do it without beating her up where she wants to stay onboard?
That's something I worry about, it's longevity, you keep an employee and you're asking too much of them constantly for years. And that's really what Seidra Wully's done in a lot of ways for any good employees. Oh, you can handle a little more? Great, here you go. And that's where somebody's gonna get burned out and they're gonna take that more money they can get someplace else. It was that good play who was really loyal to us and did a wonderful job for us.
And we've always been the place where we're giving the opportunities to people to grow from within, we can go to those positions. So, maybe we do that with the halftime folks and we start working in that direction. But we've gotta be probably with helpful folks like, uh, you, Matt, to get us a strategic plan to utilize our best dollar for our buck to, or best bang for our buck to get to that position. But it's, it seems like we're there and we need to take the steps to go in there, that what that is.
I, I just want one more question.
You go ahead.
Um, the other thing that I, I'm not for is outsourcing anytime we can avoid it because we're gonna spend our constituents' money. I'd rather be on a job that's actually here and more likely that somebody's gonna be living here and spending their money in the city instead of Seattle or Oklahoma or wherever the consultant is where they don't have any vested interest in our city. So, that's something for me, when we start talking about outsourcing a lot of the job or a lot of the work, that I become bothered by as well.
We outsource everything. We outsource all kinds of stuff. We, Charlie uses up, outsources H R all the time. And if we're talking about developing something, if we're, if we're talking about, oh, we need, we need design done and, uh, this firm came in on their budget out of Bellevue for a road project, guess who we're using? We're using that, we're using that person. So, um, if we're looking at, uh, doing a lot of development and stuff like that and we want, and we wanna put something in place, because looking at this job description, a lot of it is develop, organize. Um, develop, develop. It, it's almost in every single bullet point. Um, manages cities' compliance with complex leave laws. Um, that's something that, that, you know, we sometimes use Nikki for, sometimes we don't. Um, but if we can get the framework in there, it sounds like a lot of this mitigating risk is we need to be up to date and that's what a consulting firm will do for us. There's not one department in the city that doesn't use consultants.
I, I was just gonna say that in this whole discussion of H R, I've never been a hundred percent against H R. I fully understand what it, what H R does and what it does. I've been in an H R role, I've worked in the office for years. Um, and so, I'm not oblivious to any of that. Um, I'll be completely honest and say that I was completely blindsided and I felt like taxpayers received a slap across the face when this came forward a week after the lift levy passed. Because we're asking tax, we're asking our constituents to pay for a first responder service that the city is supposed to provide and that's supposed to come from our tax dollars generated from, uh, from our economy. And our economy just isn't hitting the mark to be able to fund all of this stuff. So, to come back a week later after we have approved fire and in two thousand nineteen approved police, police, and when we had no money, all of a sudden we have money for positions in an administrative level, I was completely thrown back. I, I felt like it was a mismanagement of funds on the taxpayer's side as far as what we were doing, because it wasn't anything that was up for discussion prior. It came forward, um, as something completely different and it wasn't up in any discussions when we were talking about budgets. And for over three years since I've been looking at financials from the city, I have sat with financial directors sitting on the finance committee, um, prior to Kelly and then Kelly can meet in. And we have sat and had these hard conversations about finance. And up until just a few months ago, it has always been, we are gonna be in the negative. We are in the negative two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. And now, all of a sudden, we have funds for this. And so, I just am, one, I'm a little, I'm, I'm a little thrown back and wanting to know how exactly we've come up with these funds. And, two, how is it sustainable in all of this? Because had we had the funds for, um, an H R director and to increase raises and all of this other stuff for, for other positions and at administrative levels, how come we couldn't have gone to taxpayers and said, you know what, the city, we do have the money to pay for, uh, two or four police or fire, two or fire, and we can, you know, and we only have to ask constituents for two to four to get the eight. You know, like, taking that burden off the taxpayers and working together for all of that. And so, that, I, I feel like that was just completely inappropriate and, and very, um, blurred in regards to, uh, administrative financials or at least what was presented to me and I can only speak for myself and how I, I interpreted that. Um, being a taxpayer and then listening to some people that go back and watch, um, some of our meetings and come to me and say, how are you, how can you guys possibly ask for this? Or what is, what is going on? How do you have money for this now? When you didn't have money for this and now my taxes are going up because I felt like I was handcuffed and had to approve this lift levy so that if my grandmother falls, she's gonna have somebody come help her. You know, like, at what point do we draw the line? And at what point do we determine as a city, where are we gonna tighten our belts and what's more important? And so, I understand that there is a risk and I understand the purpose of H R and I'm not denying that at all. I understand that. My issue is the finances of all of that and how that's linked to transpose itself into the budget and into the future.
So, okay, and I, I can fully appreciate what you're saying. Um, it's, it's really unfortunate that all of you are not there when we have these multiple meetings working through budget where we're actually, we are skimming off the bat over and over and over. That's what we're doing. Um, the, the, I'll have Kelly actually explain to you exactly how we came up with the, um, funding for it because I'm the one who said, can we make this happen? Um, cause I've known that we've needed this for seven years, but, uh, the, so, as far as what the chief needed, it wasn't just to hire a few firefighters, E M S. There were a lot of things behind, has to do with the training and the equipment and everything else that he had actually talked about this coming in with the E M S funding. But the, uh, it, it's not that we didn't. We, we did have problems with the budget. We did go in and cut and we did go in and make different decisions, got creative with exactly how we're gonna keep things going. Like, each department paying a little bit for I T and whatnot. There was different things that we did to do that. It was a shifting of the funds, it was shifting things around. It was letting go of things that we don't need anymore or aren't working for us anymore. It was, um, really working with, with what we had, skimming off what we don't need, re-identifying what we really do need and then putting funding into that. And that's how we came up with it. It's kind, this is, it's a very abbreviated version, but this took months. It took months for us to actually come to a place where we felt secure about what we're doing. And I felt quite confident for two thousand twenty-five. I think we're gonna have good funding in two thousand twenty-five. But I don't know if you wanna add to it or not.
Look at the description of the process we went through, uh, I think to get there. Kelly, I don't know if you've got specifics that you brought tonight or any of that we can share. But there are some partnerships that we, we talked about during the budget amendment presentation, uh, that we are, um, recommending we, we end. Um, for now, one of them is E D A S K. Um, that's about, I believe, nine thousand dollars in the budget. Um, another one is Department of Emergency Management. We have it in our local agreement with the county where essentially we help fund their emergency management operation that they're required to do by statute. And we're supposed to get services back, but we don't get very much back. So, we're looking to end that, that's thirty, that's twenty thousand, so you've got about thirty thousand there.
So we're looking to end that, that's thirty, that's twenty thousand, so you've got about thirty thousand there. Um, and then there were some other things, everybody gave a little, there's a whole lot of little stuff and then, Kelly, you've got more?
Uh, so the budgeted revenues specifically are a moving target, we don't know, we can't. We can't give concrete numbers on revenues, especially multiple years out, so we do the very best we can to estimate those. Um, and try to estimate them conservatively, but also realistically, we don't want to. Um, be ultra conservative to then ask the taxpayers for more money in property tax. So we try to make that balance with revenue, so. Multiple times a year, every time we're doing budget amendments, we're relooking at uh, forecasting out. Revenues, are we in line with what we think? Do we need to make adjustments up or down? So uh, that's one aspect of it. The other aspect of it is the expenditures, so with the police proposition. We were looking to hire uh, three officers and support staff there, so. Um, you know, the pay for hiring four positions in police. Um, and including the vehicles, they need the any specialized equipment, police needs. Um, is much different than hiring kind of a non-public safety employee. Um, so there's that aspect of it for. Fire, um, hiring eight people again is a much bigger financial impact than hiring one person, so. Um, hi- hiring those individuals and again, the training that's required, the equipment that's required, all plays. Into that when we're looking at uh, our estimate for those eight positions. It's close to a million dollars every year to fund those positions fully. Over ten years, so that's just the scale of. What was requested in those two different proposition ones over the year is much different, you know, one. HR person is almost a a tenth of the cost. Um, that we're we were talking about for. Fire, so when you're looking at trends and revenue too, trends and revenue are not going to increase. A million dollars from your.
And I'm not saying it was going to take the place of all eight, I'm just saying that the city should be responsible enough to take. Take the head and take some of that uh, financial burden off the taxpayers when that money says do it. So for that to come out a week after the lift levy passes is a complete. My opinion, slap in the face to the taxpayers, and so that's what, that's why I felt like it was completely, maybe it was a timing issue, I don't know, but completely inappropriate. Um, I again, I'm not against an HR person, I understand the purpose and I think as a city, I think. That at some point it does become responsible and it is something that is that should happen at some point. Um, but what I'm, I'm I'm talking about the fiscal responsibility of the city as a whole. And that's that's my problem.
And I agree with Charlie's, when he said, you know, just our professional opinion, it's also my professional opinion that. Having an HR manager is fiscally responsible for our agency for. The the reasons that I've already already explained, and I know you talked a lot about like that. Um, we've managed before, you know, we've. You know, finance department has been able to handle it before, um, we do have an increase in load, so even just talking about employees. We talked about it la- the last meeting that we brought on the um, all of the volunteer firefighters. We're now doing all of that administrative work for the volunteer firefighters. We brought in new uh, police officers, police staff, we brought that in, we're going to be bringing on these eight new. EMT firefighter, EMTs, um, just the workload does not decrease. Uh, and it and it does not remain.
Does the volunteer firefighters get the same service as the union and fire and everybody else?
Um, well, we don't have to do labor negotiations with those folks, but we process their pay.
And how come that was transferred over?
There's a reason.
Do we have more volunteer firefighters now than we had in twenty eighteen? I thought we had a big decrease, that's why we needed a higher.
We are, we've grown and averaging between thirty-five and forty-five before twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Now we're at twenty-seven, but prior to twenty twenty-three. Uh, the Volunteer Association handled all of their payroll, all of their hiring, all of the board of volunteer firefighters, retirement, their. Widows and orphans, uh, all that side of it and any of their uh, insurance claims or injuries were handled by them. And myself, um, now a lot of, a lot of the payroll functionality and all that is handled by Janine and Kelly's team.
So I heard uh, a little while ago about the ER and our budget shot and we we had a great discussion as a council about that. Um, and that was really good, uh, the utility taxes, we had to raise those because the cost of living's up, we're using more fuel and. And we want to do this, uh, PUD raised their rates five percent two years in a row, PSC raised their rates. You were saying that sometimes we just all got to keep pitching in so that we can get the service we want and. Sometimes it's a needed service, sometimes it's it's something that we've got to have, and other times it's something that as it's. All of us are pitching in and looking at our change first, we might not have all that. We used uh, city council strategic funds to pay for radios, remember that, or to pay for bills. Um, because we just simply didn't have the money, there was no money around to pay for this stuff, but it was absolutely needed, right? And now uh, we're looking at having this this excess, um, and it's it's, I I agree, HR. Is a position that's that cities do use, that that companies do use. Um, but I I feel right now we have that in Charlie and in Janine and. And Janine does, uh, I I know it may seem like forty hours for payroll, but payroll's not forty hours, I think you can attest to that. You have part-time HR or part-time payroll? Is it one payroll halftime or do you have a payroll team?
Well, we have a finance team.
Yeah, well, we have a finance team, but payroll is.
Payroll itself, um, processing payroll doesn't take forty hours, but the associated issues with, you know.
Sure, yeah.
Everything associated with payroll and benefits and.
Can add up to a little bit.
It can add up to a full-time position.
And sometimes it's, so how many people do you have in payroll?
Well, we, again, we have one person that processes payroll, but we have.
That one person.
So we have a couple of people that have responsibilities associated with it, we have oversight, we have secondary, you know, views of payroll, we have. Yeah, I mean.
For that payroll physician handling payroll, it's a part-time, part-time uh, HR. And so they, I'm not diminishing the amount of workflow, I'm not diminishing the amount of hats that are worn, I'm just saying that. We've been able to go for a while and we raised taxes just recently, don't you guys remember the emails we got? The phone calls, the neighbors that were like, my garbage is up, what happened? And I'm like, I'm like, yeah, I I voted for that and that, but this is why, and I'm trying to justify. Well, the property tax is now up and it's one percent and and it's only one percent, but it's adding up, it's adding up, it's adding up, we keep. Taking, not from our change first, even though we live there, it is, uh, we're taking from their change firsts. And that's the difference, and that's why I want to say, is there a way to have this discussion, understand the need for. The uh, HR position as we work towards it, maybe twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. It came right after a vote that went through and it looked like that vote that went through and you voted against the the budget amendment because of the protest. That HR position didn't get in, and so it seemed like that was okay and it was discussed in discussion in a different. But it's almost like, hey, this is the discussion to put it back in. You know, so it's not, you know, it's bringing it back to what was voted on, even though it's a discussion that we were we were to take on, but. I don't know, I I would like to think that we could figure out a way to to do this as it's. If I, if we have to hire a part-time position, that is, that is something that we should discuss. I would prefer to have that part-time um, kind of go towards economic development, hey, where's our park circuit at, where's our internet service at? You're looking at meaning services and then servers and and remote serving uh, abilities, right? You're looking at and finding us, you you presented a whole plethora of things you needed increase for, so did you chief and so did you chief. I mean, we just had Mark here and it was strategic planning not too long ago and it was, I need this, I need this, I need this. And it was all increase, we all need increase, we all need increase, and then this thing. We're still looking at that, other increases that the the directors presented to the council, it's still on our part, our plate, and we have to weigh that out. These guys have needs, they've already presented that that you guys brought forth for the strategic planning. So I just want to be fiscally responsible with the taxpayers' money, I want to be fiscally responsible in our community, um, and. Have a service, but when it's, when it's needed, approach it and we wouldn't be taking from the strategic fund to pay for radios if we had enough in our budget for. That's kind of how I feel, that strategic council fund should go towards various things, but including beautifying the city and. Projects that would make the city uh, more presentable to economic development.
I want to get to the idea of efficiency and I got, I brought that up. Uh, twenty plus years ago, I uh, was a partner with two other people in a firm in Mount Vernon that employed forty employees. And our older partner, great guy, suddenly, well, he got sick, he died, he did all the HR stuff, so my partner. Remaining partner and I did it with forty employees, it's a nightmare. And Janine doing that stuff, it's not just payroll, you got to pull out, like somebody's got a court settlement against them. Somebody's got some kind of L and I thing going on and w- we couldn't do our jobs. And we hired a full-time HR person, forty employees, and it not only. Took that off our plates because we were the two directors that had to run the company. It allowed all of our employees to be more efficient because they could go to the. And I saw this at Western too, they can go to HR and say, you know, I'm really having trouble, how do I motivate this employee, how do? And and you can, you can say, well, Charlie can do it, but you know. Uh, physicians and dentists get this similar metal uh, medical training, but I don't want. A dentist taking out my appendix, so you know, so it's a very specific training that is. I saw, I saw it at Western, million dollar lawsuits that were averted. And just because they're on the ground, they got to know the people, they knew the managers, and they could plan what you were talking about in terms of. Uh, labor market needs, maybe we, that person actually saves money by looking at the labor needs of the entire city. And says, well, you've got here, here and here, and there's that their position, so I'm just saying it has great benefit.
I was gonna say, I haven't heard anything from Councilmember Lloyd, I'm wondering what he has to say.
Go ahead, I'll go ahead, Kevin?
Well, yeah, first off, I'm, part of me has agrees with Sarah. You come in in January, open the door and all of a sudden, we need to change the budget for this problem. My first thought is, why wasn't it done a year ago or two years ago or three years ago? This is a high priority, why has it not been taken care of? Why hasn't somebody run run the flag up the book, the telephone pole and say, we need to do something, this is very important. So if that wasn't done, apparently, so you open the door here, so how come it's all of a sudden it's important in January? But it hasn't been a year ago, two years ago, three years ago?
So I, in all fairness, we have discussed this in certain um, council committees and I know for a fact that Sarah. And Brendan sat in on one of those committees and they actually heard this, so it has been a discussion that has been had. And I have been talking about it for almost seven years and what I have been told is that we just don't have the money for it. And so what I was also told is that we needed employees in other departments, so that's where we put our priority. Was reemployed other people within departments, we've added employees into other departments, we've strengthened those departments to the best of our ability. Now we're at a place though where in order to, as I think Councilman Cockpitter aptly. In order for everybody to do their job efficiently and for us to be within best practice, really. We need to have a an HR manager here, and so it's not something that was just. Poof, one morning I got up and I said, this is what we want, this has been a discussion for seven years.
Yeah, but you needed it last year and you needed it this year before?
We did, and there were decisions made by the team, the way that I operate things is we have a senior management team, we take things to the team, there's a discussion that's made. We talk about the finances, those decisions are made and most of the time I will abide what people say because I believe in the wisdom of the group. And I think that there's power in the wisdom of the group and I think we've done a really good job up until this point. So, um, that's that's why probably you have, you maybe haven't heard about it. But um, but it has been a discussion that has been ongoing and we've had it with other council members prior to this council here.
Just follow up on that a little bit, it was in, I believe, twenty twenty-two, we had a conversation with Burlington about potentially having Burlington provide HR services for us. And they had some potential availability, some part-time availability and they took a look at our list and we're like, whoa, no way. Um, that's a full-time position and some, so we have tried some other other options. Um, we did have that discussion back then, we got hit really hard with inflation, um, like everybody did. And we were open with all of our bargaining units, all of our contracts were open, all the wages were open all at the same time. Um, and that's one of the reasons why we had to triage, essentially, we had to deal with the wage pressures that we were receiving. Get through all those contracts, absorb those expenses and at the same time we have fire staffing issues. And there was no way that a lot, amount of money could come out of the city's budget, that was just not not feasible without getting rid of entire sections of the organization. So that's the reason for going to the taxpayers, um, it was not intentional on our part to. Come in, you know, right after the the vote or anything like that, have anybody feel insulted by that. Um, but we do have a need and, you know, certainly talk about the need again, the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, if that's where it goes. Uh, it's an ongoing need and, you know, we will continue to bring it up. I did want to point out on the list that I put together for city administrator expansion areas, just basically what I would do if I wasn't doing HR. Uh, for a big chunk of my job, there were thirteen items I listed there, some of those were council goals and economic developments. Um, emerging issues that come out, cross-departmental collaboration, some of the others have been mentioned. Um, partnerships uh, within the community and on various projects. Efficiency and service delivery analyses, uh, potentially Slean Six Sigma work, more legislative advocacy and more regional representations for the mayor. And I guarantee you, and as the mayor mentioned, there's a law, a list of kind of deferred things that I get to when I have a chance. Um, that would take a first year and a half, two years easily. Uh, so there's, there's not going to be a shortage of stuff to do in our city.
There's um, about twelve minutes left or so and I want to be respectful of everybody's time, so.
Are you looking for a motion tonight?
Oh, no, uh, no, what I was gonna um, suggest or ask is if there were any other comments or questions, otherwise, we wrap it up.
Yeah, I think that Charlie, like what you're saying, um. You know, my experience on the committees as far as tasks that we'd love to see done, the only one that's come out was that grant program. And I really, I haven't seen um, other areas like really mature, we've had discussion about things, but um. We we, you know, a lot of those ideas didn't really mature out to anywhere, so. I understand that your tax with with your physician stuff, but um, I think in this position versus the position that was held last, there was. More hats that that individual was wearing and that we didn't have as many resources as we do now under your position. When you reached out to Burlington and they're saying, oh, no, this is a full-time job and that's probably maybe because you were trying to outsource. Everything that was in your job description too, so you can do these other things. Um, but if it was like, if they can handle part of it, i- and that's where I'm going now with this consulting or outsourcing. Part of it, we can separate benefits packages, all go through this agency, if you have any benefits questions, you need to sign up on benefits, it's all going to go here. Uh, a hiring agency for our police department so they don't kind of sift eighty applicants to find none. That hiring agency is going to vet those people out, first off, it might cost us a little bit, but nowhere near. The amount of vetting eighty people through interviews and processes to find zero, I think that we would find a benefit in outsourcing and. And finding those ways, um, and that's, you know, I think that in time, being able to tackle those programs, but. If we were even getting some of those out, uh, at least with the committees that I've been on. Um, then I can say, okay, yeah, we're heading in that direction, but I. It it's, it's almost written on there like, hey, if we do this, then I'll have time, but we haven't seen besides this other one, which is a great. Investment in the grant book for sure, obviously, I think the community would like it. Um, but that's, yeah, my last final thought, I thank you guys for the conversation of the HR position and I think it's, you know. It's valuable, there's more to it than what a lot of people think and and a bit of it is advocacy, like you're saying, a huge risk is actually defending. the the city against the employees and averting lawsuits, just like you're saying, millions of dollars of lawsuits against the employees. So it's, i- it's in part employee-based, but it's in part a defense against employees. I don't know if we necessarily have that, so when we break down the the actual focus of that HR position without that risk association. And we are looking at benefits, and we are looking at uh the procurement and the training and and uh, you know, trying to get away from, you know, we're not actually seeing a high attrition rate, so we really don't have a lot of turnover. We have retirees and rehiring, but those functions separated stacked out are a lot more achievable as far as goals. If we're reaching for this whole HR position, we're tossing all this stuff in, we're not trying to chew on it one bite at a time, and it's going to be too much. But I I really do appreciate a lot of that, and in fact, it was pretty detailed. The public comments, I know we want to finish this out, I don't know uh if anybody was asked to fit these in, did the city ask these people? Nope, they just, nobody couldn't speak up.
And so um so I, again, I want to be mindful of our time, we do have an executive session, I do want to open it up for public comment. We do have this on the agenda, it's something that we said that we wanted to do. So is there anybody within the else, okay? Oh, yes, go ahead, you go to the podium and
Not the podium, actually, they need to, what are you correct?
Oh, yeah, so
To that, your chair there.
Can I just stand? Sure, okay. My name is Connie Miller, and I am a property owner here and a business owner here, and um I I just wanted to say, I appreciate the conversation very much, it's been very interesting, HR is absolutely important. I'm a business owner, but I'm also my own HR person, because we're a small business. Um if I needed to find a hundred and fifty thousand, give or take, for a budget for a new position, I would have to cut a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from my budget to make room for that. Um I just feel like budgets are very important, they show everyone what our priorities. So this is truly valuable and truly important. I think it needs to be included in the regular budget, and it I've just started coming to these council meetings, and I don't know a lot about the budget process that you're working under, but it just seems like um to me, what is the main thing isn't always included in the budget. Personnel is huge, those are the biggest services that you provide for us, taxpayers. So to me, that should be top priority and be top of mind for budgetary reasons. So um I don't know what the answer is, I'm going to ponder it some more after this discussion tonight, but I just want to encourage you to really um be aware that those of us that are paying attention see what the priorities are by seeing the budget as one of the main ways. We can talk a lot, but money is what really tops, so. Um just something to be aware of going forward, um and keeping in mind what um all of us as citizens are needing and looking. Um I heard a lot of words tonight about lawsuits and and um making sure that we're not exposed and there's, you know, issues, and I I get that part. Um definitely, but I, uh there's a lot of facets to it, so um I don't think we should be reactionary, I think it should be purposeful and intentional. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Yes.
Philip Murray, everybody here knows me. I was wondering, I brought this up before, but I'm wondering why there's a city truck and city excavator at the west end of the football field on railroad right-of-way, railroad property. He's over there digging, piling stuff up, clearing. This is, this is not public property, this is industrial business property. If there's a problem with it not being cleaned up, you have your code enforcement, go ticket them, say, clean it up. Why are we spending our taxpayers' money on this when you're sitting here trying to grub for money for another job? You know, these people don't, your your crew doesn't even know how to build sidewalks evidently. They have the equipment, you, there's places that don't have sidewalks, all they have to do is bring that excavator in there, dig a trench, put gra- pack gravel in it, two boards and informant. And you're, you're getting grant money, grant money is public money too, you know. It's just ridiculous, the spending you do and and waste. These people need to be working on city projects, this is not unless you have a city project, you're with the railroad over there, which nobody knows about. Or you, um, by you doing this, it seems like you're trying to do a taking on it. Adverse possession. And I just would like to, like somebody to explain why this is happening on railroad industrial property. Cities' money. Thank you.
Thank you. Could we get somebody to answer that question?
Well, this is a public question, I want a public answer.
Um anybody online? Just raise your hand or unmute yourself. Saying none, I will close public comment. We are now going to go into executive session, it is eight or seven fifty-four. It is seven fifty-four, and we are going to be, I'm having a discussion with legal counsel about a current potential litigation, RCW twenty-two point three zero point one one zero. Eye of one eye. Yeah, okay, and we will be back in, how much of the people need? Five minutes, okay, we will be back at eight o'clock.
Oh, yeah, that's County Park.
Yeah, that's how it's done.
There's no access to
Yeah, we went there, we went riding, so we got to see a win. We're gonna go on to the fourteen, we actually have regames this month, but Yeah, um the fourteenth, the twenty-sixth, and the thirtieth.
All those pool water games all the way.
Yeah.
Didn't see you at the meetings in a while.
Uh this one just, this one irritated me big thanks, the other, there's no sense in coming. I will get back to you, no, I want a public answer, it's a public question. It's a head, it's still recording, that's nice to make everybody aware. Makes me wonder, so if the population is a hundred or thirteen thousand and what's the cost of a per person for a new employee? Yeah. Thirteen thousand and the job pays a hundred and forty. Ask me copyright free, so.
I don't know if you can hear me or not, but we are still in discussion, and we will be back at A O Y.
Basically, I have one, one employee for every thousand people here. Thirteen thousand. One per thousand people, not that much, I mean, for You don't want to quit. They had to sign a contract.
Regularly.
Oh, they would give support? I mean, I was
Right?
They were screened some.
We are back in the executive session, and if there's nothing else for the good of the order, we're adjourned, thank you, everybody, great discussion.